Meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 is now called for order. Councilmember Goodsky will let us pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have an executive. Secretary, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitla?
Here.
Councilmember Pamiak?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
TPW director? Finance director?
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to agenda-related items. If you have comments, please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comment to five minutes, please. We have no comments. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session, and consideration of a funky junk sale. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Beaton. Is there any discussion? Please take a roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pamiak?
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of a pilot ordinance number seventeen dash zero eight, Third Coast Development. At the meeting of March 7, 2017, city council took action to approve a request from Third Coast Development LLC for a 10 percent pilot for a term of 35 years for the senior project proposed for the former Olson Plaza property. The city attorney has taken action to draft a pilot ordinance for this request. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance number seventeen dash zero eight, Third Coast Development LLC pilot.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton and a second by Councilmember Whitla. Is there any discussion?
We received some information from the city attorney today. I wish you would speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Zalinski. I've had a number of conversations with Third Coast's attorney in Lansing, who represents them regarding their MISTDA financing. MISTDA will be acting on the applications that have been submitted to them and approving a number of them, one of which is the Third Coast application that includes the pilot arrangement that had been previously approved by council. Third Coast had come before council some time ago and asked about a pilot that would have had a reduced annual service charge, 2% of net sheltered rents, and the municipal services agreement, I think it was $6,500 was the amount on that, $6,000 or $6,500? $6,000. Today, I spoke to the attorney and he indicated to me that they were hoping that council would go forward and approve the ordinance that's before it today because of the time deadlines they have and wanting to have a pilot agreement in place if they are approved by the state of Michigan. But then he also indicated to me that they were prepared to come back and make the proposal that they made previously regarding the pilot at 2% a little more attractive. Specifically, he indicated to me that they would increase the municipal services agreement payment to $8,500, $8,000 or $8,500 per year, and then lower the term of the pilot from 45 years to 35 years, both of which I thought were fairly significant changes in the previous proposal. What I talked with the city manager about is that if council were to approve the ordinance that's before it this evening, this would just be the first reading. At the next council meeting, when the second reading would be made of the ordinance, if we had another proposal that again may be more attractive to council, maybe more attractive to the developer as well, we could have a separate ordinance drafted under those terms. And if council were inclined to accept that other alternative as being something again that's maybe more attractive to the city, we could adopt, have the first reading of that ordinance, and then essentially not approve on the second reading the ordinance that would be approved this evening, again, if council were inclined to do that. Just keeping open the opportunity maybe for some further negotiation that creates possibly a win-win situation for both the city and the developer.
So, if I hear you correctly, you're saying that when you talked with him, you felt that there was more room for negotiation?
Well, certainly, today, he told me that they were, he was, his client would be committed to reducing the term of that other proposal from 45 years to 35 years, which was a fairly significant concession on their part. And previously, he had indicated to me, and I think I conveyed this to council, that they were also prepared to increase that amount for the municipal services agreement. We don't have all the numbers for you today, and so it'd be, and don't have an ordinance drafted along those lines for you today. And so, the thought would be to put that together and have that available to be presented to council at the next council meeting. But again, the developer was requesting that we still proceed with the current ordinance, just because if the state were to approve their request, they need to have that ready, at least that part of it, through the first reading in place so that they could demonstrate to the state that they're moving forward with an agreement with the city.
Mr. Shaler, you know, when we talk about the March meeting and the original documents that we had, we had an estimated $22,000 of minimum per year pilot payment. Now we're down to $16,000 as a minimum payment. The pilots that we have active right now, Respar Village and Manistee Place, both have minimum payments in the $22,000, $24,000, $26,000 range, and one of them even has an additional municipal service agreement on top of that. We get a pilot payment from the Housing Commission of about $38,000 a year for their properties. And when we look at patterns in this, I think when the previous 2%, $6,000 pilot was discussed, that was about $9,700 a year. That's a significant reduction from the original estimate, and when you stretch that out over 35 or 45 years, a significant difference in total revenue. Originally, the contractor indicated that antelope on taxes would be about $62,000 a year, and they would lose $22,000 based on paying taxes on that property. But you know, that still leaves a $40,000 cushion out there. I would save the bulk of my argument for a later date when another proposal comes in. And certainly, I intend to honor what we previously agreed to and help move the process forward. But I want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the taxpayers of the city of Manistee and that we're generating revenue that is sufficient to maintain the services that people have come to expect in this city. Continuing to add to the pilots and tax income financing and other mechanisms we do to encourage development does indeed have a grain on potential city revenue, and has an impact long-term. So, I just want to make that known.
Just to be clear for everyone, this ordinance is just for the senior, the Olson's development, right?
This is just for the housing component of that project.
Okay. Correct. And then, is there going to be a separate ordinance for the senior center itself, or does that even?
No, the senior, the Olson building as it stands is on the tax roll.
Right.
If this project goes forward, I think it's about 60% of that building will be occupied by the senior center, so they're tax exempt. That will be taken off of the tax rolls. The remaining 40% will then be a grocery store, which would be on the tax rolls. And part of this housing component is going to be retail, and that portion that's retail will also be on the tax rolls for tax gap.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, I knew. I just want to make sure everybody knows in the room. I have a question. Are we going to have a work session about this? What, if, you know, we can sit down and look at the numbers?
Well, we can do it at that council meeting, but we can have a full discussion.
I would like to see a complete 35-year spread that shows the exact amount of revenue that's going into our general fund between the 10% and the 2% plus $8,500.
We can run those numbers.
I think that's the only way to fairly evaluate how much the city is really getting.
And that could, in my mind, that could be done at a council meeting as well as a work session. And I think just to minimize the meeting, number of meetings, we could do it as part of the next council meeting, as part of the discussion.
I think that just makes it a lot clearer for everybody.
Sure.
I think Councilmember Beaton's concern would be my concern also. If there's other items on the agenda, there's likely to be an extended discussion and a pretty thorough look at the numbers. You know, I know you can look at city benefit, and you can look at what it does to the county. There's a number of millages that have been passed by the taxpayers in the county of Manistee that would be excluded from revenue due to the municipal service agreement. That would certainly be an advantage to the city, but a disadvantage to a lot of other programs long-term. Perhaps, our next work session is the 11th of July, and you would hope to have this second reading, I'm assuming, on the 5th of July.
Correct.
Is it possible to keep the council agenda light so we have our time to, on the 5th?
We can try. I'm at a loss to remember what we have on it all ahead. But if there's some things that we can move around, we certainly will do that.
I'm sure it's going to take some time because there's going to be some questions.
It may be a little longer night than we're used to.
Yeah, but limitation of Third Coast would be, would be.
So, we can do that on the next council meeting, and what we would, the way we would structure the agenda is then have this new proposal on the agenda before the second presentation of this ordinance. And we'll have that financial information that Councilmember Beaton.
I would, I would suggest that we, I mean, we'll have the one ordinance already. If the option is to go with the existing ordinance that we're considering tonight, that wouldn't be sidetracked by considering an alternative.
No, no, it would still be on the next council agenda for consideration. It would just, in terms of being placed on the agenda, it would be after discussion on it.
Wouldn't be on the consent agenda, wouldn't it, right?
Well, it could be on the consent agenda because then it would be adopted before we discuss. So, we'll just put that under, on the agenda, but after the discussion on this new proposal.
Any other comments or questions?
I would be in favor of that. I'm just a little disappointed that we didn't have a work session before now to discuss this stuff. I know we've had a lot of concerns with it, and I would have hoped to do it sooner rather than later, but it is what it is.
Well, to clear up that confusion, when that was brought up, was that the last council meeting? We thought we were going to get some information, some new information for that council meeting, which we didn't receive. And when the city attorney and I were presenting the council, we felt that we would have that new information before the next work session. Last week, it didn't come in. So, that was kind of the frame of references, that we thought we had that new information available at the work session to discuss it then, and it didn't come in. So, that's why.
I think that was a point of confusion because I know Councilmember Beaton specifically asked in the minutes that it be included in the work session, and other council members had also expressed the desire that we have a work session on it before it came back up on the agenda, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, I checked with the city attorney, and our recollections were similar, and you know, that's just the way it is.
I would have preferred the work session to be done in the middle of May after there was so much confusion, and I think there was a lot of confusion. I shouldn't say that there was confusion among all of us because we had our own minds made up on it, but I think we could have gone over the numbers in mid-May, the difference between at least a 2% plus $6,000 versus a 10% pilot, to get a clear understanding of how that works. And then it would be easier to absorb this new concept with the increases that they're proposing.
Any other comments? Please take a roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pamiak?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of budget amendment 2017 dash 01 for fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council approval expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses the expenditures associated with those events and attempts to project what final year-end expenditures will be to avoid any year-end negative budget variances. At this time, council could take action to adopt budget amendment 2017 dash 01 for fiscal year ending June 30, 2017.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Bradford, do you have anything to say?
Counsel, I don't really have much to add beyond what was in the memo. Most of the items that comprised of the things that made up the budget amendment have been known to council through the quarterly updates and through staff updates. The fact of the matter is, we had budgeted a $40,000 deficit, and I'm expecting around a $45,000 to $48,000 surplus, so it's about an $88,000 turnaround, which I think is very positive. I think we implemented some things this fiscal year to help with budget amendments moving forward and instill a little bit more of a process in this, so I think that's helpful. And I think overall, this is probably the fewest number of budgetments we've had in a number of years, so I think it's favorable. Thank you.
I had a question for you, Mr. Bradford. This indicates that unbudgeted events, all the unbudgeted events were brought to council and approved prior to the expenditure. Is that correct?
No, what the memo says is sometimes there's unexpected things that happen, and when those overrun budget, then those have to be for council for approval. So, not, I mean, overtime has been an issue in some of the departments, but that's been discussed. There was a memo given to council several months ago, and it's been visible on the financial statements. But ultimately, if you're over budget, at least in the general fund on a departmental basis, those have to be addressed by a council budget amendment.
There were several pieces of equipment that were budgeted and not purchased. A sewer camera for $28,000, a crack sealing machine for something over $70,000. I would have anticipated we would have a surplus if those items weren't purchased.
Well, those are not in the general fund, though, so the crack sealing machine would have been bought out of the street funds, and the sewer camera would have been out of the water and sewer fund, okay?
The, there's a half million dollars added to capital improvements. What exactly were those?
That's timing of bond expenditures. So, you have the bond issue that we did, and depending on how we budgeted as to how those actual expenditures came in causes variances. In terms of the overall items that were built into the bond, we're right on target with what we had bonded for, so there should be no overages whatsoever on any of those projects in aggregate, did not exceed the bond proceeds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Could you please take a roll?
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pamiak?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of historic district commission bylaw amendments. On June 1, 2017, the city of Manistee Historic District Commission amended Section 1 authority, item 3.1, meeting notice, 3.3, special meetings, 3.7, order of business, 3.9, agenda items, and Section 6 amendments, and deleted item 3.5, public hearings, and Section 5, open meeting and freedom of information provisions. At this time, council could take action to adopt bylaws for the state of Manistee for district commission and authorize the mayor to execute the documents.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Goodsky. Is there any discussion?
I have just a general question. The changes that are being made in the bylaws, is that something that Mr. Shaler looks over before we see it?
Yes, Denise and I worked together on some suggested changes, and most of it is just a clean-up really of the language and making sure it fits what the obligations are of historic district commission. And so, yes, in this case, I did wish you would provide my input to Denise.
But that's a comfort to know. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Could you please take a roll?
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pamiak?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitla?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the purchase of a 2017 Ford Police Interceptor. The Manistee Police Department maintains a fleet of police cruisers to effectively service the city. In an effort to replace cruisers that are nearing the end of their respective life cycles, it is determined that the purchase of a 2017 Ford Police Interceptor is warranted. Bids have been solicited, and one Ford dealer emergency vehicle out there has been identified that fit the police department specifications. At this time, council could take action to authorize the purchase of a 2017 Ford Police Interceptor from Harrod Ziegler Ford Emergency Vehicle Products for the price of $42,508.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll say it.
Martin? I have a motion by Council, by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Whitla. Is there any discussion?
Just to thank you, I thought that was, the bid process was very well-done. The chief and Tom did a good job, and I like the idea of spreading it over, doing one a year, and paying cash for it, which is really a great thing. I like that idea.
Yeah, I would second that. I think, you know, the presentation and the way the vision was structured made it fair to clear and easy. Sergeant Bruce has done that, and I appreciate your efforts to spread the purchases out and make them cash purchases as opposed to finance items and streamline the replacement process. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, though, we're still going to be purchasing these, but it's going to be spread out over the year to get us into that yearly purchasing, albeit you never know if we're going to have an incident with a cruiser, and we have to purchase something, but this is the program we're going to go forward with.
Well, there were three originally approved in the budget.
Yes.
And all you've done is you shifted the timeframe in, I believe, 90-day increments to do it, so they're staged out a little bit.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other comments? Could you please take a roll?
Councilmember Whitla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pamiak?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements. A report from the Finance Director and Oil and Gas Investment Board. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Ed Bradford will report on the activities of Finance Director and Oil and Gas Investment Board and respond to any questions council may have regarding their activities.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the Oil and Gas Investment Board, and then we'll be moving into the Finance Department. So, if you noticed over on the way up to Fifth Avenue Beach on the north side, the pump jacks there, those have been shut down for quite a while, but just recently, within the last few months, they've started back up. And so, you'll see at least a couple of those moving now, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. This is a picture of the Aztec plant. When they started the plant back up, after they started the wells back into production, they had some issues with a few minor leaks and some odor issues that they've been working through and trying to correct. And I know Chief Kozel has been working with the plant manager there to address those, and I think that relationship is getting stronger, and I don't think there's been any really recent odor issues, so I think they've kind of corrected some of the problems that they had with that. Just a quick overview of the Oil and Gas Fund. It's a charter-protected fund. That was something that previous councils had done, which I think we can see is now paying literally dividends down the road, so I think that was a wise move on the council's part, and the electorate, too, for actually putting that protection into the charter. It preserves the royalties from the city-owned mineral rights and leases, and it also, there's been an Oil and Gas Board that's been established to oversee those investments. We use Bartlett &amp; Company as our investment advisor. Their two primary individuals are Woody Hubel, who is the lead portfolio manager and also focuses on equities, and then Troy Snyder, who does fixed income. And Bartlett, with Woody and Troy, do an excellent job on the city's behalf. The Oil and Gas Board is comprised of five members. James Smith is the mayor, myself is the vice chair, Linda Beaton, council member, Steve Brower, and Doug Parks. City manager is a non-voting member, and Cindy Lakovich is the recording secretary. The Oil and Gas Board manages the Oil and Gas Fund under the auspices of the Investment Policy Statement, which is the guiding policy document for managing the fund. It's approved by city council. Anytime there's changes suggested by the Oil and Gas Board, they have to approve it, but then it also has to be ratified by city council. That policy statement sets investment and asset allocation numbers. It establishes what our performance benchmark is, and importantly, determines our annual spendable allowance. That current spendable allowance is set at 4% of a 12-quarter moving average. That particular rule is working very well. It's an appropriate rule for the type of fund we have and for the asset allocation. Currently, our maximum equity allocation in the fund is 65%. In the recently adopted budget, that 4% spending rule yielded about $390,000, which is roughly 2 and 1/4 mils, so it's a fairly significant amount of income that's being generated for city purposes and capital improvement projects. From 2011 to 2018, that spending rule has generated roughly $3.1 million. This chart shows crude oil prices going back five years. As you can see, they're down about 60% since 2014. Right now, the price has stabilized between about $40 and $50 per barrel, and as a result of that, Aztec, as I mentioned, has restarted their production. You can see back in 2016, it dipped. You can see back in 2016, it dipped down almost to $30 a barrel and it's interesting if you follow the industry at all, the rig count of active exploration rigs dropped dramatically because at those prices, they can't produce profitably. But those numbers are starting to go back up and we can see it here locally with Aztec starting their wells back up. This chart shows the royalties that we've received and as you can see, it goes back to 96, we were getting over $300,000 per year. Over the last 22 years, we've received roughly $2.5 million in royalties. The protected royalty balance in the fund is about $7.5 million. So, if I were to plot this chart backwards further, the royalties were much, much higher in the early days when those wells first came into production and as is normal with oil and gas wells, they steadily decline as the pressures decrease and the reservoir becomes tapped out. The blue arrow points of 2017 where Aztec was shut down and we didn't have any royalties. That 2018 is what we're expecting for a budgetary number. This chart shows the principal. It's about $7.5 million. That's the amount that's charter-protected. This chart shows all of our earnings, which include interest, dividends and realized and unrealized gains. You can see from 96 through 2008, you know, we had fairly steady returns. Most of that was the result, or all of that was the result of a ladder CD portfolio with a few government bonds, a few treasuries thrown in there. 2008 is when we first started being able to invest the fund differently. You can see the returns have been dramatically higher since then. 2015 and 2016 were fairly flat, but we're expecting a much better year here in 2017 and likewise in 2018 if the stock market continues to perform. This chart shows the principal balance and the accumulated earnings and you can see it kind of mirrors the returns that we showed on the previous slide, starting in 2008. So, the value of the portfolio is right about $10 million. Charter-protected principal is at about $7.5 million. This slide shows our asset allocation in the portfolio as of 2017. You can see we're just about on our target asset allocation. Little bit, little bit under on cash and fairly on on fixed income. Bartlett is constantly reevaluating the portfolio and they do it, they're not really, they're active managers, but they really aren't trying to time the market. What they try to do is look at investments that they think are going to outperform the market based on broad analyses that they do and also relative rates of returns. And that's been very, very successful for this fund. This shows the performance of the Oil and Gas Fund since inception, 331 of 09. And you can see we've had a compounded annual return of just under 10% since then. Based on that asset allocation that we have, that's very, very competitive. The items below the total return are the benchmarks that we use in various indices so you can kind of get an idea of where that's at. But based on our asset allocation, the fund has performed quite well. Are there any questions on the Oil and Gas Fund before I move on to the Finance Department? So, next, we're going to talk about the Finance and Treasurers Department. There's a couple of things I want to focus on, so we're going to kind of run through some of the standard metrics kind of quickly. Primary responsibilities are basically anything to do with money, whether it's receiving revenue or investing or managing the audit, doing the budgeting, financial reporting. There's a whole variety of things that we do downstairs there that kind of are behind the scenes. Staffing, we've had some turnover and that trend is going to continue. So, Michelle Wright, our city clerk, who is at a clerk's conference, as well as Heather is at a clerk's conference this week, has 28 years of experience. She's been telling me that she's anticipating retiring in 2018, probably January, but haven't gotten that writing yet, but I'm pretty sure that's going to happen. Myself, I have 15 years' experience and one of the things that our department prides itself on is maintaining professional certifications and maintaining our continuing education so we can be up to date and help the city manage its affairs efficiently. That's part of the reason both Michelle and Heather are at the conference this week. It's actually a clerk's conference, but so that they can maintain the professional designations that they've received. Mary Bachmann retired in March of 2017 after 17 years. Heather Puffey has been with us for 16 years and then we have two relative new employees, Kelly McCall, who's been with us for about a year and a half, and Laura Lorraine started in March of 2017. 61 years total experience. This chart just shows the layout of the Administrative Services Department. You can see there's quite a bit going on there with different functions and activities. Some quick office metrics. We process about 8,000 tax bills a year in terms of property tax bills, about 40,000 water bills and around 5,000 miscellaneous receipts, whether that's for copies or weed cutting or parking tickets or whatever it may be. Approximately 200 transactions per day on average. We cut about 2,400 AP checks and about, pay about over 5,000 invoices per year. On busy days, our counter can see up to 125 or more customers per day. Looking ahead, some of the things we're going to be working on in the upcoming year is one, to support the council strategic plan where those goals intersect with things that we can impact. Our biggest thing we're going to be doing in the next year is implementing the new financial management software and I can speak for my staff, they are so very thankful that council approved that purchase. It's probably a little bit overdue, but it's going to give us some capabilities that we simply haven't had in the past and it's going to make the city much stronger because we're going to be able to get information in better, better form, quicker, answer questions more quickly, do better analysis, provide better reports. And it's also going to be more convenient for the public. So, I want to personally stand up here and thank council for that and my staff is very grateful as well. When we buy that software, it's going to allow us to implement some additional payment options for the public, including some more ability to take credit cards, which a lot of people have been asking for. The two things I kind of want to talk about more though are some of the departmental restructuring that's going to be coming as well. And then we're also working on updating and revising our policy manuals in anticipation of the new software and in conjunction with the new software. So, the financial management software, as I talked about, that's moving forward. We've made the first payment for that. This week, we're going to be doing some interviews with the vendor to gather additional information beyond what they already have to kind of shape the implementation plan. We're going to be doing the scheduling hopefully here real soon as to when that'll be. It's probably going to be November and December. They're that far out. The company is rapidly growing. Then, once we get that scheduled, the steps will be the installation and data conversion of the software and then training on the software and then actually going live on the software. So, it's a big effort to do this type of a transition, but BSNA has literally done hundreds of these conversions and they're particularly good in doing them from the software we're currently operating on, so I think it'll be fairly seamless. And their software is quite easy to use, so I don't anticipate the training to be all that difficult, although there's going to be a lot of new techniques and processes to learn. Departmental restructuring. So, we laid out a plan for succession planning when we did the Clerk-Treasury-Finance White Paper a number of years ago and we've religiously followed that plan. It's worked out very well. One of the things that the plan anticipated though was that Michelle would be actually retiring before Mary did. That didn't happen that way. So, when Mary retired, Michelle needed to name a deputy clerk and she named Heather as the deputy clerk. Heather had been going to the different clerk schools, had been through the program at CMU and has Michigan Municipal Clerk designation. She's been helping out with the elections and what have you. When Michelle retires, like I said, probably in January, then we're going to need to get a new city clerk and that is a council appointment, but we've been grooming Heather to step into that position and she's been going to all the schooling and that sort of thing. So, that's presumably the direction that's going to be recommended. And then also, when that happens, I'm going to need to advertise and hire a deputy director slash assistant for our department and that was all laid out in the white paper. So, we're going to be really kind of starting that process here towards the end of the summer, drawing up the job description. I already have a pretty good idea of what we need, but making sure we can get that advertised once we know when we're going to need that position and make sure we get a quality person in here to continue the good work for the department. Does anybody have any questions at all regarding the report?
The clerk position as a council appointment. I would assume that we would follow the same process that was followed when our new public safety director was hired, that we would advertise and compete for that position. I have every confidence in Heather.
I'm not sure that that's been determined yet. I think that needs to be a discussion between the council and the city manager. In the past, that position has been promoted from within and that's what we've been grooming Heather for, for a number of years, but that conversation still needs to happen. I'm simply presenting what was laid out in the white paper and kind of the direction that I think we're trending, but that's subject to discussion. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on the municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment?
Good evening. Tyler Leppen, DDA. So, I just wanted to keep council up to date on the DDA's amended budget. The DDA passed amended budget on Wednesday. It's not before you, currently I had conversations with the city manager and the finance director and since actual expenditures did not exceed the budgeted amounts, we weren't required to provide an amendment. But I thought I'd just update you, expenditures are projected to be at $279,000 as compared to the budgeted amount of $309,230. The most significant decrease in budgeted expenditures was a result of the absence of a executive director at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, if there's any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to answer them or provide an amended budget at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Someone's glasses are here, I'm not sure. Good evening, everyone. A couple of comments. I'm glad to see that we have some good news in the finance area with the budget amendment being favorable, DDA being favorable. It seems to me about this time last year, we were talking about not only budgets not being favorable, but things not being properly amended as required by state, by the state. So, that's good news and also pay-as-you-go for these new police cars, et cetera. With that being said, I've got some comments in the finance area. I'll start with the pilot program. I don't get a comfortable feeling that we know what is acceptable to the city as a council. Obviously, I've been gone for a while and I haven't been following through on everything, but the comments I'm hearing here is, and the question I have is, have you guys met and said, what is the city, what would the city accept? And why aren't we going back and doing some negotiation versus waiting for the other side to always come and say, here's what the bone we're going to give you guys in the city? It's not the way we should be operating. And maybe I'm missing something. Last time I came here, a gentleman stood up here and said, why aren't we having a presentation with some visuals here to show what the financial impact is? Getting back to what the mayor said, Ms. Beaton here, as to seeing some analyses, et cetera. Where are they? And we talked about the half the billion or 60% turning into a nonprofit, so there's no taxes on it. And then we talked about, oh, it becomes some retail space, which is going to add property tax. Okay, well, tell us what it is today with someone who owns the property compared to what it's going to be tomorrow. Show it to us. I don't think that's too much to ask here for. Last week or two weeks ago, when I got up here and talked about the Rams a little bit as well, I forgot to mention, I'm aware of this gentleman who passed away and a foundation is being set up with the $15 million, $2 million for education, $13 million for the county improvement, specifically regarding some entertainment or recreational type facilities. I would hope the city has taken the opportunity and the energy to approach that foundation, who is now in the works of trying to establish the guidelines as how that money is going to get spent, and put a plea as to, hey, we need some help with the Ramsal Theater. That could be a big win for the city. Okay? So, let's not miss any opportunities like that. We should be actively going and approaching that foundation right now and saying, what, you know, here's our need. Because they're setting the guidelines up for 2018 right now. Before the meeting, I handed out a couple of pictures. I handed out a picture of, once again, yeah, Quincy Street, yeah, yeah. 91-year-old lady lives in front of this house. Do you think she's going to see your street fixed? Kind of get frustrated after a while. The good news is that particular lady doesn't drive anymore. The second thing I handed out was an alignment done, my vehicle for driving on the roads in Manistee, probably kind of Quincy Street, that I had to get repaired this week. So, you know, it's nice that we talked about the Oil and Gas Fund. We've been very blessed in Manistee having that fund. But one thing that was missing in the presentation today was, where did the money go? How did the city spend that money? Why are we embarrassed to say it? Why are we embarrassed to say the majority went to the Ramsal Theater and recreational facilities, not for the needs of the residents? Okay? All right. Thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it.
Are there any other citizen comments? If not, officials and staff. Senator? City manager? City attorney? Public Works, we have Public Works here? Public Safety? Finance Director? Plans and zoning? City Engineer?
I'm just going to fill in for Jeff because I think he would have made his statement. 12th Street reconstruction is scheduled to start on Monday. We were notified by the contractor that they're available to work and so they're scheduled to start work on Monday. There'll be full reconstruction on 12th between Maple and Oak and then we'll be crushing and shaping Oak Street between 12th and 9th Street. And that is expected to last four weeks, which will last over July 4th. Jeff, as mine are saying, Jeff's talked to the schools and they had to make a decision, do we do it now? Because the contractor couldn't promise us that they could do it before school would start again. And so, the opportunity in the window is now, so we're going to take it. There will be a detour set up that will bring traffic around up to 8th Street to Tamrec. So, access to the school will be through Tamrec for a period of time when it's needed. There will be some access, of course, through the work area as it allows. So, any questions specific to that?
And the residents on the, in final township will have access to their driveway during this?
Yeah, there will be local access through construction as part of the requirements of the contract as they allow access. There's times when we pour concrete, like the curb in front of their homes, where we'll have to coordinate because that does need some time to set. Other than that, you know, they'll try and maintain gravel access and access to their homes. So, we'll have to work with them on when we pour concrete that they need to cross.
Thank you.
There's a repair going on in front of Ideal Kitchen, one of the water pipes and such. During the wintertime, when I'm down in that vicinity, oftentimes, twice last year, I called Public Works and gave caps that the snow plows had knocked off that extend up from the sidewalk a little bit. I can't believe that the impact of the snow plows hitting that and knocking the caps off are good for what lies under, especially in the wintertime with frozen ground and stuff. Is there any consideration to some sort of fix for that? Do those need to be lowered a little bit or?
They can definitely be lowered if needed. You need to cut them out, lower the, was it in the sidewalk you said?
Yeah, they're in the sidewalk.
So, it's a curb stop, so it's a smaller valve?
Yeah, and it knocks the brass caps off. And the first one that I gave to them, they said, you know, thank God they didn't get into the snowplow. They get sucked up into that, yeah.
Yes, they can be. Sometimes they move with time with frost heath and they kind of work their way up above the sidewalks.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper? Mr. Cooper.
I have a couple of comments for the DDA Director. Just a suggestion, just a spur-of-the-moment kind of a thought. Chippewa cottages is in the DDA district. So is so, so most of the revenue will go to the DDA district. Are you guys, do you get a sense from the business owners that they're behind this project, and are they thinking of any ways to help promote it, or to just show some support for it?
So, I've talked with the developer of the project. I'm kind of taking his lead on how he wants to promote it at this time. I told him I'm available, and I would do anything to help get the word out and educate the public on the development and the different issues with it. So, at this point, if the developer doesn't want my help, I don't know what else I could do.
And as far as the pilot goes, I just want to say this because I think sometimes I come off sounding really harsh, and I don't mean to. I'm not trying to take away any money or deprive the other taxing authorities of money. I think my job as a city council person is to try to make sure that I get enough revenue in our budget to help support our streets and help support city and police. I think my number-one decision has to be for what exactly is going into our general fund for our taxpaying citizens. I would probably feel differently if the County Board of Commissioners had come in here and said they were opposed to the project and haven't heard any complaints from the schools. Now, I know there may be a little, there might be a little bump here and there, but I think they weathered that pretty well, and it seems to me that there's more support for it than not. So, that being said, I will continue to support bringing more revenue into our general fund than not. And that's it.
I'm good here.
I just have a couple of questions. During the budget, and this is a question of staff, we approved cameras for the council chambers. Just wondering if we have any updates on that?
We received a quote from our vendor of record, Central Interconnect, who's done all the technology in the council chambers. That's been approved. It came in under budget. They are going to try to install it in July, but this is the really, really busy time of year because they do schools and auditoriums and that sort of thing. So, if they can't get to it in July, then it'll probably be in September. We're going to be looking at different options for recording the city council meetings. Could be staff does it, could be some kids from the film production class at the school, or we might possibly contract with PEG to do those if there's a need for that in the interim. But it's going to be a nice system. It'll have a couple of cameras. It'll all be touchpad on the Crest Ron, so it's real easy to have presets, and it's going to do, it'll do really good audio quality and make it easy to get files, not only on the web, but also to peg for them to be able to broadcast, so it should suit us very well. It's real similar to a system they just put in the city of Wyoming's city council chambers.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the last one is, I visited the recycle center, and this is always one of my hot buttons. On the side of the metal bin, metal plastic bin, there was a pile of garbage. Just wondering if we took any license plate numbers, or what we're doing to catch these people, find them?
I'll follow up with the DDA Director, see what we have.
Okay, thank you. Did you inform council in that, too, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Nothing, Your Honor.
I would like to thank Public Works for their diligence in keeping the signs cleaned up on US 31 that are posted, violation of city ordinance. I'd also like to note that I'd like to go down to the Riverwalk and kind of watch the traffic unit and then talk with people. We have bicycle riders, we have skateboarders, we have people walking dogs. And I'm not so against people walking dogs if they've got them on leash and they're responsible in cleaning up. I don't find the dog to be a problem. I think I find the owners to be a problem. And I've had a number of people express to me that they would use it more often if they could walk the dog while they're walking and enjoying it. So, just something to throw out there and consider in the future. I'd also like to note in the paper on the front page today, notice of the passing of Tom Stady, prominent, long-term citizen in the city of Manistee. And I'd like to extend my condolences to the family during his time of grieving. With that, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.